Good afternoon. It is Monday, November 2nd. I'll call to order this meeting, this work session for the Moore County Board of Education. It is 3:00 PM. I'll go ahead and note that I have with me all six other board members, Mr. Ed Dennison, Ms. Stacy Caldwell, Dr. Betty Wells Brown, Ms. Helena Wallen-Miller, Ms. Pam Thompson, and Mr. John Weaver. And we are joined by Dr. Robert Grimacy and Board Scribe Sonia Potter, as well as others. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, so move.
Second, Betty Brown.
Mr. Dennison, second by Dr. Brown. All those in favor, Mr. Dennison?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Ms. Wallen-Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
And I also vote ayes, so the motion carries, seven of. Would you now please join me as I recite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now might we pause for a moment of silence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We continue to hear of so many family, friends that we know that is affected with COVID. So let's just keep our community in your thoughts this afternoon, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, we'll now move on to pending action and discussion items. Dr. Grimacy?
Madam Chair, it's my pleasure to defer to Mr. Andrew Cox, Executive Officer for Budget and Finance. Andrew?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, and other members of the board. What you're going to see here in just a second, there you go, is the proposed budget calendar for the development of the board's 2021-2022 school budget or school district budget. Today, we're bringing the calendar to you for board approval. During the months of December through June, we'll have budget discussions with advisory councils as necessary as we go throughout that timeframe. In January, we'll have a board work session. At the board work session, we'll cover specific budget topics as we've done in past years. I don't have a date, and talking with the county, they had not set their calendar for their January work session of when they'll do their session like they normally do where they present estimates. So that is to be determined. Once we get that date and it gets on their calendar, I will bring back a revised budget calendar to the board. Following along, we'll have our work session February 1st, which will consist of budget items. March 1st, the board's work session will be the presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget on March 8th. We'll have a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget. Any feedback that we get from that public hearing and feedback from the board will be incorporated in a new revised superintendent's budget that will be presented at the board's work session on March 29th. On April 12th, we will have the board's regular session, where at that time, the school board will adopt the Moore County Board of Education. And again, the county has not scheduled their time for us present your budget to the commissioners, but that's typically done in April. And last year in May, the county manager had planned to move his budget up, where he presented his recommended budget to the commissioners, so at that point, we would know what funding he was recommending for Moore County schools. We're assuming that it's still going to be in May. Again, once we get that confirmed, we'll bring a revised budget calendar. And same thing in June, when they have their, the county commissioners have their public hearing on the budget. And as statutory requirement, they have to take action by June 30th for a county budget. And we plan to bring back to you, the school board, a final budget resolution or original budget resolution, I guess I should say, no later than October 15th, 2021. And happy to take any questions around the calendar, proposed calendar.
Let's go ahead and make note, thank you, Mr. Cox, that appears we have three meetings in March, but that third one is because Easter falls on April 4th, and thus, we would not meet the week of Easter. So we are putting that work session into, on March 29th, so everyone might mark their calendars. I'd also like to go ahead and make note that this is just a very traditional calendar that we have been following for a good number of years, and the budget discussions that are held with the teachers, with parents, with support staff, with advisory councils are all simply being done another year, that these conferences and discussions have been being held for a good number of years, such that it's a very transparent budget process. And we're pleased to continue allowing this to be in front of the public and for public comment to be heard. So thank you for scheduling all of those in as well, and Dr. Grimacy for recommending that we do hear from the public on a routine basis, so that we will get good feedback. So are there questions from other members of the board? All right, and thank you very much, Mr. Cox. We'll knock out our calendars.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Grimacy, may we move on?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Lachlan.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, board members. Good afternoon. I'm joined with Director of Critical Instruction Donna Gephardt to present to you again selected 2022 school improvement plans for your review and approval. As required by the North Carolina General Statute and Moore County Schools Board Policy, school improvement teams collaborate on creating plans of improvement on two-year terms. And per Moore County Schools' policy, 5910, once that's happened, once the schools have voted on their respective plans, they are then submitted to you for your review and potential approval. These school improvement plans are on two-year rotating renewal cycles, which is why we bring to you about half of our schools every year for your review and potential approval for that next two-year approval. These plans are housed, and we utilize the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction NC Star Online Plan Facilitation Tool to put these plans and for these schools to work their plans and monitor their plans over that time period. So in October, staff brought to you 11 plans for your review, for your observations, comments, and questions, and we now bring those back to you for your final review and potential approval, and certainly open to any questions or discussion that you may have at this time.
Are there questions for Dr. Lachlan?
Dr. Lachlan, it would be helpful if you could just remind me of how the parents were able to provide input onto these plans?
We have parents that serve on these school improvement teams, and so they're able to provide input through that process. Also, our school improvement teams, many of them, they collect feedback from parents and from students and others as they're developing their goals and their action steps and plans. And so there's opportunities throughout improvement process for them to get involved and to share feedback, to be potentially part of these plans.
I was really interested when I was reading through these plans, how many of them actually discussed continuing furthering family engagement and parental involvement in the schools. So I was really happy to see that, because I think that's important.
And for some of them, it's actual part of their goals and part of their work.
Exactly, exactly.
Are there other questions? Ms. Thompson, did you have a question? I know your mic is...
I just wanted to make a comment, Madam Chair, that each plan that they are, as we read through, they are very well put together, put out, and they appear to be totally a collaborative process from the ones that were on the committee. So just our thanks to, I'm sure it's a lot of work involved in finalizing and getting all of these together, so just thanks for all the work that's gone into the process.
I believe we've got some very, very impressive goals there, but lots of good plans in order to see that they are accomplished. So we'll look forward to hearing as these schools make their various achievements and can report back on their successes. In this year of both virtual and in-person learning, it's very difficult to even think about goals and what we might need to be doing to meet different ones. I was reading one of the plans, and it had to do with teacher evaluations, and I'm thinking about what it must be like to be teaching in class virtually and to have a principal or assistant principal sitting in the back of the room, watching your every move as you're looking at a computer screen and trying to keep children online interested. So different world out there. Mr. Weaver, did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, I had a question of Dr. Lachlan. As we go throughout the year, are there going to be opportunities for you to bring back information on the progress being made on these plans?
We certainly can take those opportunities through the board update, through activities and strategies that are being used with schools, or we could always bring back, at a later time, bring back a progress update, if you will, if you would so like it in your meeting. But we certainly can continue to do that.
I would like to see that happen, if at all possible.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? All right, then, Dr. Lachlan, tell them we wish all our faculty, faculties and staff to get to work, and we're proud of what they're trying to accomplish.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Grimacy?
Madam Chair, I'll just continue to allow Dr. Lachlan and his team to proceed with item 2C. I see we've got Ms. Gephardt cited as our presenter. Donna?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Grimacy. It is my pleasure to bring to you a, just a quick revision to our Beginning Teacher Plan for 2021. We bring this plan when updates are made to the State Board Policy, TCED-016. At that point, you endorse this, and it is a viable plan until the State Board makes changes. Well, in September of 2020, the State Board did make an addition to their policy, which is now, we are now requesting that you make it so that we can place this statement in our policy. It basically states that they are wanting to collect data. So in compliance with General Statute 115C-269-35, they're asking for a completion of a graduate survey by the beginning teacher and by our principal during the BT's first year. So this will require the survey to be completed by one of our principals, as well as the BT, in the first year of their experience with Moore County schools. So we are asking that piece of, that addition that the State Board made, to be placed into our policy.
All right, are there questions here? Just a matter of clarification, this is for teachers new to the field of education or teachers new to Moore County?
Brand-new first-year teachers, so it's only for our brand-new beginning teachers.
Donna, I don't know if you know this answer or not. As I was rereading things, it occurred to me this afternoon. Currently, the schools of education do a survey one year, two years, three years out. Is this going to overlap with that, or is this taking the place of that, or do we know?
This was actually the State Board committed, the State Board, under Tom Tomlin, with the work on that group. What was happening is this is the survey that's been in place for the first-year teachers, Dr. Brown, for that survey to the higher ed. And what was happening is teachers were not filling it out, nor were the principals.
I know that.
So what they've done is they've said, under the Dr. Oxenden and Tom's work, they've said, we're going to make this now part of the policy so that we can make sure we're getting the higher ed more information. So that's why you see the change in the policy. It was because it was not being, it was, there was not compliance with it, so now they put it in that we have to do it.
Because we had less than 50% return rate most of the time, and so this will be beneficial to the state as well as local communities to know how the preparation is, so we can get feedback. Thank you so much, and thanks to the state for doing that.
Yes.
Can I also ask a clarifying question, Ms. Gephardt, on who takes the survey? Is it all beginning teachers, whether or not they're certified at that point as a teacher?
It is, once they are certified, it's the beginning teachers that are certified as a BT1. So they have to be classified as a BT1, and once they've completed that or in the final, they typically send it out in April, that survey, so they'll take it as they get that survey in April, as well as the principal.
Okay, so those teachers who come in mid-career won't take it until they're certified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
There were two documents that were part of the summary. The second document, the Beginning Teachers Support Program Plan, that's the Moore County Schools Plan. Has that update been incorporated into here, and if so, where is it? Is it the Teacher Working Condition Survey?
No, sir, it's in the, if you'll scroll down to the paragraph where it says designated at the local level, an official to verify, oops, give up a little bit, it was like the, it's on page one, and it's right there at the bottom of that where it says designated, you'll see that GC 115C-269, it's right in there, that's where we've added that, in compliance with that General Statute, completion of the recent graduate survey by beginning teachers, and the employer shell survey by the principal of the school year during the BT's first year of teaching, as part of the requirement now.
And that survey is produced by the Department of Public Instruction, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is. It's a DPI provides that survey to our beginning teachers and our principals.
Thank you.
Okay, so our agenda, when we include this, is simply about adding that survey to the program, doesn't make any changes to our very, very successful Beginning Teacher Support Plan.
Exactly, we just wanted you to be aware that that was added.
Thank you, Ms. Gephardt. Any other questions? All right, then we might move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Mike Metcalf?
Good afternoon, Dr. Grimacy, members of the board, Madam Chair. My Future NC is a statewide nonprofit organization focused on education attainment and is the result of a cross-secular collaboration between North Carolina leaders in education, business, and government. Endorsement of this resolution demonstrates the board's support for the attainment goal of the My Future NC, that 2 million North Carolinians should have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030, and that the Moore County Board of Education will continue to foster partnerships with leaders in business, education, state, and local government, and community-based organizations to achieve that goal. We ask for your endorsement of this resolution, and if you'd like, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to read the resolution for you.
Certainly, Dr. Metcalf?
A resolution to support the My Future NC attainment goal, whereas My Future NC is a statewide nonprofit organization focused on educational attainment and is the result of cross-sector collaboration between North Carolina leaders in education, business, and government, and, whereas the My Future NC Commission has concluded that North Carolina should have a goal that 2 million North Carolinians will have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030, and whereas the Moore County Schools Board of Education is committed to ensure that educational experiences inspire students to reach their full potential and lead productive lives in an ever-changing world, and whereas the Moore County Schools Board of Education, along with other key partners, will help advance the educational attainment of students in North Carolina by ensuring students graduate, career, college-ready, and whereas the Moore County School Board's Education, Board of Education agrees that North Carolina faces a gap between the projected needs of citizens with high-quality credentials or post-secondary degrees and the attainment of those high-quality credentials or post-secondary degrees. Now therefore be it resolved that Moore County Schools Board of Education supports the attainment goal of My Future NC, that 2 million North Carolinians should have a high-quality credential or post-secondary degree by 2030, and Moore County Schools Board of Education, along with leaders in business, education, state, and local government, and community organizations, will continue to foster partnerships to achieve the goal. We ask for your endorsement.
Are there questions for Dr. Metcalf?
I have a comment. I would like to add that a number of community colleges have already endorsed this objective, and Sand Hills Community College is one of those. So I think it's a good effort and a good goal to aspire to.
Mr. Weaver, I'd go so far as to say I believe every community college president in the state has approved it, so 100%. And about 15 or so school districts already have, and as an superintendent's association is encourage all of its members to move forward with this, so we appreciate the board's consideration.
Well, and given our success in our partnership with the Sand Hills Community College and our College and Career Promise Program, and even all the credentials that we've been able to offer our students, I mean, we have raised our credentials over 600% over the past five years, and I think it's really a testament to the current partnership that we have, and I think this just solidifies it. So I think this is a good goal for the entire state to have, and it sounds like we might be leading the way.
Any further questions? All right, then, Dr. Grimacy?
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. With your permission, Madam Chair?
Please.
At this time, I'll introduce Mr. Barath for items E, F, G, H, I, and J. Mr. Barath?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Good afternoon, Chair and board members. I'm glad to accompany you with these next six items. Starting off will be the agreement for purchase and sale of the Aberdeen Elementary School. As a board will recall, during the September 8th meeting, the recommendation of staff at the conclusion of the upset bid process, the board accepted the offer by Pathfinder Investment Management to purchase the old elementary school for $1.5 million. The same resolution by the board was direction given to staff and legal counsel to formulate an agreement for purchase and sale of the property, which we have conducted and completed, and attached to this executive summary is the agreement for your review. I will note that legal counsel from the buyer, PIM, and from the board may make minor adjustments to language in the agreement between now and your meeting next week. The comments or adjustments they make will be non-substantive and changes. The requirements of the agreement will remain the same. As we all know, once lawyers get involved, very selective on the choice of the words. And so attached is the agreement, and it comes with recommendation to the superintendent that the board consider a motion during the board meeting to accept, and I'm here to respond to any questions you may have.
And if I might, John, I would like to simply add that the task before the board that we hope would be that you would just read the contract to determine if the contract reflects your intentions that you approved last month. So there is nothing new here, it is simply the written purchase agreement that expresses the board's intent as approved by the board last month.
That is correct, sir.
I have a few questions, if you would bear with me, John. Going over the agreement, I saw that the earnest money equals up to about $190,000. Is there a reason why you guys didn't do due diligence money as well?
Would you please expand on what you're considering, due diligence funding?
Yes, so you have the initial deposit and additional deposit, which is earnest money that they'll get back within the 60-day time period. Due diligence money is money that if they back out before the 60-day time period, they won't, they won't get back. I was just curious if that was ever an option.
That had not been brought forth by legal counsel during the discussions of the contract. It was a term period of the 60 days, at which point the money becomes at risk. I do not know if there is any statutes that would place the money to be required at risk. So I would have to defer to legal counsel, and I can get a response to you in email, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, that's acceptable. And then I had, here, in 6.2, if you can explain more clarification on that paragraph, my understanding of it, and I could be wrong, if we back out after the due diligence period, this means we owe them up to $65,000 plus their earnest money back? Is that correct?
That is correct here to that. This is should at any time after the board executes this agreement, that the Board of Education cancels the agreement, that the damages incurred by the buyer would be reimbursed up to $65,000 in addition to receiving back their deposited earnest monies. The reason for that is because upon execution, they will be investing with engineers, legal counsel. counsel, and designers to put together the plan in the town of Aberdeen for approval of development of the property. That's where they have the 180 days to achieve that. And so if for some reason the board elect to cancel withdrawal, they just want to recover their investment of those funds based off the good faith of the agreement.
What would be a scenario for us to cancel it?
Legal counsel and I could not come up with one. Except that the board said they do not want to proceed for a reason and elects to cancel.
Okay, so there's really nothing that would hold us to pay up to $65,000. That was just my concern, is that we would be paying out-of-pocket money, so.
That is correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a huge scenario behind that if that ever did happen. And then as far as the closing, so once they sign it, it'd basically be 240 days out, which would put us into June. Is that my calculations correct?
That, I have not run a date calculator, so.
Okay. Okay, and then what if for several?
I think that's a reasonable forecast, yes.
Okay. And then if the town of Aberdeen decides, I mean, he can't get an answer after the 60 days, are we giving them an extension for their earnest money? Or are we, I'm sorry?
Period.
Stacy, you're muted.
We didn't get to.
That totally didn't make sense, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But you were muted. Go ahead and repeat what you said.
Okay. I just wanted to say that after the 60-day period, and that they haven't, because I know they have to go to Aberdeen Council for approval. If they still haven't gotten approval for that, are we doing an extension of the due diligence period, or it's just going to fall on to the 120 days? Or 80 days? I'm sorry, 180 days?
Following the 60 days, the monies that you had brought up initially become at risk for them. They will become the Board of Education's regardless if the project's approved or not or the sale continues or doesn't due to their inability to obtain approvals. So that date remains 60 days. Should the board decide for reasons to amend the agreement with extensions, that would be up to the discretion of the board, however, it's not a requirement of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. You said it much better than I did. And that's all I had, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The original appraisal price for this property that we received in 2019 was $635,000. I understand.
That's incorrect, Mr. Weaver, that's incorrect.
What was it?
I think you're looking at the wrong appraisal. The Aberdeen Elementary appraisal was $1,353,000.
No, I didn't say 1 million. I said 635. How much was the appraisal?
That's what Mr. Barath just said. Repeat it, John, please.
Yes, $1,353,000 for Aberdeen Elementary.
Okay, this is Aberdeen Primary?
No, sir.
Oh, we're on it, okay. All right, you're on it. I got sidetracked, and I was on a different topic.
You're speeding through, John. We'll get to that.
Yeah, I'm trying to get through this, okay.
Got to the end of all six of my topics.
These are questions related to item 2E, Agreement to Purchase and Sale of Aberdeen Elementary School, 2E.
Okay, so are there other questions about Aberdeen Elementary? Just go on the other one.
The only question that I have is that once the board approves at our next board Monday, then is that when the clock starts as far as going forward?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is simply the written contract that we voted on last month. So no changes from actually what we discussed last month to this one, but we are sort of proceeding with putting it in writing.
Yeah, and the clock technically would start after they signed it, correct, John? Not necessarily when we voted on it?
They will have it signed ahead of your meeting on the 9th, and then the board will execute it on the 9th, and that will be the official date. And that is noted at the top of the first page.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, are there additional questions? All right, seeing none, move on, Mr. Barath.
We're right, just for the board's purposes, we're on item 2F. 2F, Bid Results and Award of Bid for Classroom Displays at Multiple Schools. Thank you, John.
Thank you. And these items will be very familiar to most of you because we've gone through these on all the other elementary schools. The first topic is classroom displays at multiple schools, similar to what we have brought to you regarding the new school construction and the change of platform for standardizing displays at all grade levels in our schools. The county commissioners had provided us with that $2.136 million for select capital improvements at our schools. Included in there was a major step in the replacement of our failing systems in our schools right now. So Kent Eklund and his department proceeded with putting together a complete assessment of the conditions of all displays at all classrooms across the entire district to come up with a plan identified for removal and replacement, and also refreshing through what's existing at the temporary Pinehurst Elementary site. And so Kent Eklund is with me on this to inform you of the process for the bid that went through and the results that came out of that. Mr. Eklund?
Yes, we presented this through the DemandStar online bid process. We presented vendors with multiple options for, to look at in terms of refreshing the projectors. We worked for a while with our schools to come up with a display standard about what classrooms would take more advantage of interactive displays versus ones that would take advantage of just having a television. So we've standardized on K5 that the touch interactive is very important. In 612, just having a large, bright display, a good flat panel TV has worked very well for them. So had multiple vendors provide different options, looked what was available within the 2.1 million. There was a specific line item that was set aside just for the classroom display refreshes. And then we selected the two vendors to provide. For the K5 instruction would be Dell to provide what are actually going to be laser projectors that fit in with the existing classroom displays and smart boards directly. And then for 612 would be Nextwave Tech to provide large TVs with wireless connectivity for all the classrooms in 612 that are end of life. And this address all the classrooms in the, that aren't part of the new construction to care of their failing classroom displays.
In the budget amount that was identified on the capital funding provided by the county was $387,400. The awarding of both of these to Nextwave and Dell would leave approximately $47,000 remaining. Mr. Eklund is continuing the process to identify an installer for the K through 5 display units, and that will be included in the total when that is done. But that amount should be under the board requirement for action and approval. And Kent and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions? I must comment, I'm impressed to see that these new EPSON laser projectors will actually coexist with earlier pieces of technology, being able to make use of the smart boards that are already there and the mounting projector arms that are already in existence and are mounted, because so many times we see things that are meant to simply be discarded with electronics. And it's wonderful to see that some of these things will continue to work and facilitate instruction with the new projectors. So that's good. I'm also glad to see that these projectors have long-life bulb, because I know, I can remember having a digital bulb go out and what the incredible expense was to replace one, but how desperate you were to get it redone. So it is good to see that. I'm also glad to see that we're not expecting our technology department to be responsible for the installation, since we know that we are keeping them running at all times while maintaining digital devices. So this looks like money well spent. Are there other questions?
It sounds like we're going to be able to standardize now all of our elementary schools and our middle schools. Is that where we're going with this purchase?
That's the goal. The existing K5 schools will be standard across what they have installed in the schools. And the 612s, again, they're moving away from the touch capabilities and more directly teachers working and just wirelessly displaying on the television. So that was an important standard for the 612 schools. So that is what we're moving towards as we refresh all the equipment.
I'm glad to hear that, because I know that makes it simpler also for our departments, our technology department to maintain everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
With your permission, Madam Chair?
Please move on.
Item 2G, Bid Results and Award of Bid for New Pinehurst Elementary Video Surveillance. John?
Thank you. And just as mentioned earlier, a lot of these are going to be very familiar to the board as we did this for McDeeds, Aberdeen, and Southern Pines. And start off with this, we're going with the video surveillance system at the new Pinehurst Elementary School. Again, through the same process that Mr. Eklund mentioned we did for the displays, we issued a request for proposals to multiple companies through that US ETPA and received two responses to it, NetSource and NC Sound. The apparent low in responsive bidder was NetSource Enterprise. They've performed work at Aberdeen, McDeeds, and Southern Pines for these systems. So they know exactly what we need and how to do it. So their amount of $75,818.96, which is paid for through the school construction bond, is within the approved project budget. But it comes with a recommendation to superintendent for the board to consider a motion to accept their bid in a word of contract. For background, just to let you know, that falls just below what it was for Aberdeen and Southern Pines Elementary School as far as the video surveillance system is. Those projects, Aberdeen was about $82,000, Southern Pines about $94,000, and this about $76,000. So it's just a little bit under from where it was. And here I also have Kent and myself to respond to any questions you have.
Other questions? All right, three, one, then we might move on.
Item 2H, Bid Results and Award of Bid for Pinehurst Elementary Agreement for Classroom Interactive Displays. Mr. Barath?
Thank you. And this is exactly what Kent, or Mr. Eklund, had presented just previously about the district-wide. Again, it was a similar process where they went through the DemandStar to broadcast this to 26 different vendors. However, through all those efforts and reminders, there was only one responsive vendor for it, and that was Nextwave Tech. Their price of $268,444.47 was the bid that was received. That would be, again, just like the other, from the county through the school construction bond, and it does fit within the approved budget for the project. And for background on that, this is right in the middle of all four projects. The quantities of these devices are pretty consistent, since the schools all offer the same number of instructional spaces across the board. McDeeds Creek was about $284,000, Aberdeen $264,000, and Southern Pines about $270,000. So this for about $269,000 falls right within the realm of the other projects were. And so Mr. Eklund and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions? We're just getting used to some of these things, but building new buildings is good. Begin to be wrapped up is even better.
I will remind the chair that this is the last of this current cluster, just for record. Item 2I, Bid Results and Award of Bid for Pinehurst Elementary School Paging Speakers and Installations. Mr. Barath?
Thank you. And so just as with the others, these bids were solicited to the vendors through a similar process, and we received two quotes for it, one by NetSource and one by Carolina Digital Phone. Both have performed work at our schools in the past. The apparent low was NetSource Enterprise Technologies for $78,560.91. This is, again, almost right in the middle of where it was for the other projects. Aberdeen Elementary School was about $67,000, Southern Pines about $85,000, and this about $78.500. So the amounts would be, again, paid from the county through the school construction bond. It fits within the approved budget for the project and would come with staff recommendation to the superintendent of the board consider accepting the offer, or the bid, to install the speakers and paging system. And Mr. Eklund and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, anyone? Well, thank you, Mr. Barath and Mr. Eklund, for hearing the bid for us and for moving us right on toward completion.
Happy to.
Grimacy, back to you. Or Mr. Barath?
Dr. Grimacy, you're muted.
Earlier I was unmuted, and I was shuffling papers, and so I got several text messages telling me I had to mute. At this time, we have item 2J, Offer to Purchase Aberdeen Primary School. So here's the one that you were referencing earlier, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. And so as a board will recall, previous actions that the board has taken that declared surplus properties with the construction of these new schools, especially the Aberdeen and Southern Pines schools. The board has also authorized staff to work to dispose of the properties where staff has engaged with a broker to assist with the outreach to potential buyers and the marketing and showing of the properties to bring offers to the board. The real estate agent had started, as you'll recall, earlier this year, and then the pandemic hit and created a hiccup in the industry for loans and financing. And so we put a hold on, trying to aggressively market the properties until we could figure out where everything was going to settle. We had identified the highest and best use through the, as noted in the appraisal, for the property to be a multifamily development. The opportunity here led the agent to engage with buyers who specialize in the low-wealth housing development market area. And as those potential buyers were doing their due diligence to assemble an offer, they discovered that the location did not meet all the requirements for subsidizing the low-wealth housing development. And these are in conformance, as noted in the summary, with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. There were three specific areas that it missed on that put the brakes on their ability to develop, and those were distances to amenities such as grocery, shopping, and pharmacy. There's a distance requirement for those, and the closest ones were further than the limitations permitted. So upon discovering this, and that the multifamily was not going to be an option, the broker immediately reached out to other avenues of investors. There were investors he reached out to that might have been cash-heavy, needed to park money into a property as a future development of some kind. He also took a look at those within the community area of Moore County and surrounding for opportunities for maybe purchasing the property for other uses. One of the investors did respond with an offer of $120,000, and this is also important for the property, as is no conditions for any approvals, changes, or anything for closing. So after reviewing the offer, it was concluded that the Pinecrest Wrestling Club Sandcats, with their offer $120,000, be recommended to the board as a potential buyer for the property. And just as we did with the elementary school, with the board's potential approval next week, that we would then take this bid, prepare it to publish as an upset bid process, and we would do the exact same processes outlined in the following notes on the summary that we did for Aberdeen Elementary. And again, the term upset does mean that any additional bids must be submitted higher by a certain amount, and that is about $6,000 for anyone who would also like to purchase the property. So right now, we anticipate the potential buyer is in a good position. They have financing available and ready, and that we come to a staff recommendation to the superintendent that board considers approving the offer of $120,000 for the Aberdeen primary site and to authorize staff at its next board meeting to conduct the up- site and to authorize staff at its next Board meeting to conduct the upset bid process and bring the results back to the Board at their December meeting.
Mr. Barath, if we could please, would you please address the question that Mr. Weaver brought up earlier and talk a little bit about what the broker has advised relative to the relationship between the appraised value and the best offer that we've been able to bring to the Board to date after these months? I would remind the Board that there is nothing etched in stone about the appraised value relative to the Board's determination of what is fair market value of this property. The appraisal is no different than any other appraisal, but our agent does have some reflection on the relationship between this particular appraisal and where we ended up. And I'll let John share that perspective at this time.
Yes, sir. And as Mr. Weaver noted earlier, that there was a difference between what was presented to the Board previously as the appraised value of about $635,000. In that appraisal, they identified the highest and best use of the property to be a multifamily development. The zoning for the site does permit two adjoining units, such as if you did two townhouses adjoining together, to be developed on the property. And it was preliminary discussions with the Town of Aberdeen. They did not have any upfront objections to a potential development as such on that property. And so the investors that he was working with for the development of the low-wealth housing units did not have any qualms or concerns about the appraisal that was shared with them. As it, it was a function of doing their due diligence analysis to prepare an offer that they discovered that they could not develop it in a manner that was fitting for it. The difference between that and what the offer is, and as Dr. Grimacy noted...
John, if I could elaborate on that, just you alluded to this earlier, but there was a reason why these developers came to that conclusion, and it had to do with federally subsidized financing that would have been available had they met that standard. They failed to meet that standard, and so some of the favorable financing that was available to them, had they met that standard, was not available to them. Could you just restate that, please, in a more succinct statement than what I just said?
Yes, and that was, as I had noted during my introduction here, that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for subsidized funding for developments for low-wealth housing has many requirements in there, and the location of the property failed in those three areas I previously mentioned. And that was the distance to grocery, the distance to shopping, the distance to pharmacy. All those locations exceeded the distance requirement as outlined in the funding availability. As soon as that was discovered, all of the potential developers fell off on interest in the property. They determined it was not feasible to develop the property in any manner without having the availability of the subsidization of the NC HFA. And so what you're looking at in this offer as a result is that you have an appraised value of highest and best use, which was multifamily, which might have been achievable, but it has not met those requirements. And now, as Dr. Grimacy had noted, you're looking at what fair market value is assessing the property as is. So what the market is willing to yield today indicates a start at the $120,000.
Yeah, fair market value is not yet determined by this bid. This is a starting offer that will allow us to have several weeks now to determine whether or not that is closer to fair market value as opposed to what the appraised value might have been. Mr. Weaver, I'll turn it over to you if you have follow-up.
Yes. I understand that the $120,000 is just the start of the upset bid process. Should we go through that process and get no further bidding on the project, the property? What obligation do we have to accept that? And if we don't accept it, are there any penalties associated with that to Moore County Schools?
It is. There, I'm going to answer the last part first. No, there are no penalties. First question, part of the question you asked is, we will bring the results to the Board for consideration to accept or to reject at your December meeting.
And there is no, no, let's make it clear, there is no obligation on the part of the Board to accept this offer. I want to make sure that we spell that out very slowly and carefully. The school board has the authority to determine the fair market value. And so you can look at the appraisal, then you can look at the reality of, you know, weighing what it is that you'll have before you next month as opposed to now, and then make, then render that determination. But to do so without any obligation whatsoever, you can turn this down. What we will want to consider is that if we don't have enough money to maintain our existing properties where we are educating children, I certainly will not be recommending a whole lot of investment in these properties where we are not educating children. And we've already received some feedback from citizens in the Aberdeen community of the growing unsightliness of these properties. It did not take long for us to start hearing about that in these recent weeks. Under no circumstances do we have the staffing to maintain these properties, nor the money to do so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is Pinecrest Wrestling Clubs and Cats affiliated in any way with Pinecrest High School?
Not as far as I'm aware of. I think it's just a name that they have for the organization.
Thank you.
Mr. Barath, I had a question. You mentioned that there were some low-wealth developers that were interested in building low-wealth housing. Were there any that were interested in building non-low-wealth housing?
There were not any interested in doing that because the cost of tear-down development of the property to meet a individual home site development was cost prohibitive for resale in that area.
Thank you.
Additional question?
I have a question. John, how is the broker going to advertise when we, if we do accept this for an upset bid?
That would be my charge of responsibility, and I publish it in the News and Observer that there, we are accepting this process. We also make a filing with the Clerk of Courts here of the upset process.
Grimacy, that'd be done in the same way that Aberdeen Elementary was back earlier. Are there additional questions?
I also think, John, Mr. Barath and I will have some conversation. I think, given the price of this being so low, John, we may consider some traditional ways, just posting it on our Facebook page and putting it in the pilot as well. That's a relatively low price and one where we may be able to get some interest from other 501(c)(3)'s. Once they see what that price is, there may be some interest in some parties that previously looked at it and were scared off by the $630,000 appraised value. I'd like to have that conversation with you. So Ms. Caldwell, we will use the same methodology we've used before, but given the unique nature of this offer being as low as it is and that it is a 501(c)(3) that has expressed interest, there may be some others that look at that, and they might, they might be willing to come up with 10% to participate in this process.
All right, any further questions? All right, none, then we'll proceed to set the agenda for November. And thank you very much, Mr. Barath, for all of those reports. Construction's a happening place here. And I'll just run down the list if you'll let me know. I'm going to simply assume that these will be consent agenda items unless someone speaks up. Item A, budget calendar consent. Item B, school improvement plans consent. Item C, teacher support plan, simple revision consent. D, resolution support, my future consent. E, the agreement for the purchase and sale of Aberdeen Elementary, that's the contract, would be consent.
Hey, Lady. I would suggest E being action, only because John said he is going to change some wording on that. I would like to see the wording on it before we accept it.
Actually, he said there's the potential that a lawyer might change some wording, but...
I think there's a likelihood. I, let's go ahead and just, Madam Chair, my recommendation would be that if there's any reservations on the part of the Board, we'll play it safe. I think there's a likelihood that there'll be some tweaks to the language, but nothing to the substance.
Item E then will become an action item.
Thank you.
Items F, G, H, and I, which are all for installation of classroom displays and paging and whatnot, could all be consent items. And then we would have item J, the offer to purchase Aberdeen Primary School as an action item. All right, all in agreement there, unless I hear someone. Have to run a give a question, or you're just in agreement?
I'm in agreement.
No, I'm in agreement. I didn't know whether you'd call for...
We didn't have a motion on that one, so. All right, then that does it. Ms. Potter, are you clear? Items E and J will be action items, all the rest will be consent?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, then Dr. Grimacy, we will move on to reports.
Madam Chair, you're 55 minutes into your meeting. Do you want to take a break, or do you want to proceed?
Anybody need to stretch? Raise your hand if you need to stretch. All right, well, let's just move on. I think our group is ready to stay active today.
Very good. At this time, I'll introduce Dr. Locklear to lead you in presentation and discussion of item 3A, status report for second semester reopening, implementation of Plan A for K through 5. Board members, I will introduce this by simply stating that it has been the staff's intention to report this month and next month on its timeline. So the timeline that this Board, that this staff presented to you last month, we're simply updating you on that timeline. It's not our intention to provide you with some of the extensive detailed preparations that we've done in the past because frankly, we're just kind of taking what we've learned in the past and applying it to second semester. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Madam Chair, Board members, thank you. On behalf of the senior staff, I'm bringing to you a brief status update on our second semester reopening and implementing of Plan A for K-5. Throughout our planning, thank you, Lawrence, next slide, throughout our planning from the summer, we've talked about various plans for reopening schools. We've always based that as we move forward with Plan B and now into Plan A on five key considerations and guiding principles that we've shared with you and the public on many occasions. First and foremost, we want to do to the extent possible, ensure safety and wellness of our students, staff, and families. We always want to ensure equity and instruction for all students, ensure that all our students are receiving high-quality instruction regardless of where and how it's delivered and what plan is delivered on. And as we've noted in our presentations, the need to be nimble, the need to ensure adaptability in our planning and in how we implement things based on information that we receive and changing guidelines that we may receive from the Governor's Office, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And lastly, in all that we do, we want to continue to ensure clear, consistent communication with all stakeholder groups. In October, at your October meeting, you did approve the implementation of Plan A for K-5 students beginning the second semester on January 5, 2021. You also endorsed, and we discussed our plan to be prepared and to simultaneously plan for 612 to also begin Plan A during the second semester, if approved by the Governor. And we do think that at some point, it will be likely that we will be able to move into Plan A for 612 during the second semester, and we'll continue to plan for that while we are implementing Plan A for K-5. The next slide that we've shown many occasions in our presentations, just is that graphic that shows the various plans that we've noted. We may have to be nimble to go back into Plan B or Plan C, but our goal all along has been in Plan A, is to be in Plan A when we can do it safely and when we can do it when it's safe for our students and our staff. And so this graphic demonstrates that, and also demonstrates the all-virtual option that we'll continue to offer during the second semester. We did, we talked about last month, if you go to the next slide, we talked a little bit about what Plan A looks like for K-5 students. And we talked about that the current face-to-face students will attend together beginning four days a week, on Mondays and Tuesdays and Thursdays and Fridays. Those K-5 students who are in face-to-face will attend face-to-face. Wednesdays will continue as a remote learning or asynchronous learning day for our students. And we know we're going to begin there with four days a week, but it is our plan as we monitor the metrics and information for transition into five days a week during the second semester. So while we begin at four days, we're planning to transition to five days once the metrics show that we can move that way. As noted, face-to-face students attend together. All students will continue to wear their mask, and staff wear their mask. We'll have the daily health screening procedures that will continue, and we'll continue to limit visitors to our campus. The next slide, we just continue with some of the points about what it would look like. Again, Wednesdays will continue as a virtual, a remote learning day or asynchronous learning day for all students as we begin Plan A. We do plan to move where we would have our K-5 students in Plan A attending five days a week face-to-face, but we'll begin four days a week. Classes will be at full capacity, and we'll have minimal social distancing that will take place in our classrooms, during lunch, and on school buses. The next slide was one that Mr. Barath put together to show what a typical classroom in grades four and five would look like on our, on our average of 20 students in a class. We have classrooms that have more than that, all the way up to 31 students in grades four and five, but in K-3, as you are aware, we have class size limits that limit that to about 21 students at most per class. So this is a typical classroom that we shared with you last week. And as we move into the next slide, we talked a little bit about that timeline and plan. Just to give you an update, as Dr. Grimacy said, we're going to share with you based on where our timeline is. The timeline that you approved last month, from October 12 to October 30, we were going to plan, and we did, for Connect Academy enrollment and re-enrollment process for second semester. That has taken place, and as you'll see later on the timeline, we opened that enrollment and re-enrollment process today. Also, we noted that starting last week, and it did through November 13, the requests for second semester transportation would open up, and that's for all students, K-12. Families, we want to remind our families that if they see the need to have transportation during second semester, they must request transportation during that window. Last week it started, it's open all the way up to November 13. Our second semester Connect Academy enrollment and re-enrollment for all students K-12 opened up today, and will go through November 13. And then, once we have that data, once we know our students and their plans and their families, we'll begin to work with our Connect team and our school teams of scheduling and staffing our Connect Academy classes and our face-to-face classes for second semester. And we did note in last month's meeting, and it's worth noting again, that while we certainly want to limit that as best possible, it is possible that a student will have a different teacher second semester than they had first semester. And again, while we want that to be as limited as our schools can make it, we also know that if it does happen, our schools are going to do everything they can to make that a seamless transition. We just want to remind our parents that that's a possibility, that they could change students going in, excuse me, teachers going into second semester. Did I have a little bit into transportation and the work that they've been doing? Mr. Bowie, Mr. Barath have been working with transportation team. Again, that second semester transportation request window has opened up. I'm repeating myself, and I'm doing that on purpose. That's for all K-12 students. We want to make sure those families make those requests if they see the need to have transportation during second semester. We've sent notifications home with all students who currently ride a bus, and the request portal is open on our Moore County Schools website. Our parents can just call the Transportation Department to request bus service. To dive a little deeper in the work of our Connect Academy, the next slide has a little bit more information around that work of our Connect Virtual Academy second semester enrollment. Our team surveyed our teachers, our current Connect Academy teachers, and all certified teachers, to say, are you actually going to be teaching virtually next semester? To gain that data as we planned and scheduled for second semester. That, again, window opened up today, and I can't emphasize this enough, all current Connect students and any face-to-face students who would desire an all-virtual option for second semester must enroll or re-enroll during this window that closes on November 13. And that's, we really want to continue to spread that word and communicate that with our families. And we want, and our current face-to-face families that are in Plan B, who may not be comfortable with a full five days a week face-to-face in K-5 eventually, and we're thinking very likely for 612, they need to request to be in our Connect Academy during this window, just like our current Connect students who want to stay need to request during this window. So really want to emphasize that as best possible. So really want to emphasize that as best possible. My apologies, I'm getting a call on, here we go, sorry, my apologies. Going to the last, the next slide just reminds us of where our timeline is moving. As we move far past the Connect Academy enrollment window, our transportation department from the 7th to the 18th of December will be sending out letters to our bus riders currently who are riding the bus, who have second semester transportation, and will be mailing letters home to those who've requested and who aren't in transportation right now. And then we start our second semester, January 5, 2021, it begins, and Plan A is implemented for our face-to-face K-5 students, four days a week face-to-face. Wednesdays remain a remote learning days, asynchronous learning day. We'll start that way, but again, we do plan to transition to five days a week of instruction for those Plan A students. And we're going to simultaneously plan for the likely Plan A implementation in grade 612 during the second semester. So certainly open to any questions that you may have this time. The senior team and myself are certainly available for that.
All right, do we have questions?
I have, I have one question. There was just a little bit of confusion that I have gotten as far as do six through 12 have to let you know on buses as well, or is it just K through 5?
K-12, Ms. Caldwell, great question. All K-12 students for transportation and for Connect Academy.
Okay, and that's even if they've already registered and they're riding the bus now, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That, Ms. Caldwell, that's part of our planning for the inevitable return of all students. So with all the shuffling going back and forth between the remote learning platform and for us planning for that inevitable return of all students, we need to, we need to validate that yet again because we're going to be in a position upfront where, you know, we've got to really stretch our transportation assets out as far as we can. And so any students that maybe have gotten their driver's license, second semester, there's all kinds of reasons why sophomores, juniors, and seniors might change their dependence on school bus for the second semester. We need to, we need to validate under these circumstances.
And the forms are online, correct?
Yes, ma'am, you can access that off our main website page. That one's right there.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Wallen Miller?
Well, Ms. Caldwell asked one of the questions I wanted to ask about transportation, and just to be clear that even if those that are currently riding the bus, they still need to request again for second semester, and if they're not riding the bus, they need to request for second semester if they do want to ride the bus. The other question is for those that are in the hybrid learning now, so in Plan B now, I think one of the things you said earlier, which was really important, is it's not only about continuing in Plan B, but being willing to go into Plan A. So families really need to consider that, that if they're going to stay in Plan B, that they will be moved automatically to Plan A once that happens for their grade level. So just being sure in the communications from the school level that that, that is a part of that choice that they're making. But currently, if you're in Plan B and plan to return, stay in that, you don't need to do anything, correct?
If you're in Plan B and you're comfortable with Plan B or Plan A, you don't have to do anything. You can just remain there. That is correct, Ms. Wallen there. But if you have discomfort and you would rather have an all-virtual option, if we're in Plan A, that's when you're requesting to connect.
That's with the exception of transportation.
Two separate, two separate.
Two separate items.
Two separate items.
I want to avoid any confusion on that. If you're in Plan B right now, you still have to make your transportation choice.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Dr. Brown?
What is the status of our students having instruments, their laptops or Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera, in the schools? Have those been distributed now, and are we having any gaps anywhere that we are aware of?
We have distributed all, all devices, K-12 have been distributed. We still have some students that we're still working with, make sure we get reliable internet access through hotspots, et cetera, but we, we have distributed all devices. We also recently got shipments in of additional hotspots, and we're working to distribute those where needed.
Do we know how many? Do we have it now? I know this is out, but about how many, like 150 students?
No, ma'am, I certainly can get you that information.
Could you get that for me for next week, please?
We've secured about 96% is about where we are. We applied a percentage to it. I believe that's a percentage from our data, but I definitely can get you that. Yes, ma'am.
If you would, please, thank you.
Is it, was that reported in the school board monthly update, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so Dr. Brown, if you'll check your up that, you might find the information you're actually.
I saw that, but I wanted to see if anything, anything further had progressed because there's still, since, I mean, that's still 4% that we're not reaching, and I don't want those students to fall behind.
Yes, ma'am, understood. We do, we do, yes, let's make clear, make sure the public doesn't misunderstand. There are parts of the county where whether a child has a device or not, it's immaterial, at least until they get internet connectivity. And I would suggest that the numbers that we shared in the school board monthly update for those children that were participating in Plan B are already down to that 3% level. So it was children in the Connect Academy that we were still in the process of securing that digital access. Getting them digital devices is one part of it, and then finding means by which to get them connectivity is the second part of that. But we all have to accept the fact that until there is a much higher investment in, in infrastructure, that there always will be a percentage that's going to be beyond our reach. Ms. Thompson?
The question I have was regarding our transportation and our students, the additional students that we will have with January 5. Are we still following our initial guidelines of attestations and having parents to fill those out, or has, will that be relaxed a little bit since, since we're having more students? Where are we with, with those type guidelines?
Well, let me, let me first say that we're not guaranteed that we'll have more students because remember, we had 173 families, okay, that they want, they don't want to be part of the transition to Plan A and the elementary levels. So I'll defer to Dr. Locklear. We already have modified our attestation for getting access to transportation, and I'll, I'll let Dr. Locklear review that and then what we're going to be doing for second semester. But I did want to make sure that I made clear that we're, we're not settled yet on exactly whether the numbers are going to go up or down. Mr. Barath, looks like he's ready to. We'll start with Dr. Locklear and then go to Mr. Barath.
Okay, thank you.
The attestation process and screening, help screening process continues. That requirement continues under Plan A. We have modified our attestation process of transportation. I'll let Mr. Barath talk about, just remind us of what that is. John?
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. The attestation for riding the bus is a one-time form that the parent guardian fills out for each child, and in there, they attest that they will not put their child on a bus should they say, answer yes to any of those categories. As far as separation that you mentioned on a bus and social distancing under Plan A, there is not a requirement for any. That only applies to kindergarten through fifth grade. Grades 6 through 12 still must meet the Plan B requirements for transportation and not more than one per seat. Two may be in the same seat if they come from the same household. So our two schools that are K-8, Westmore and High Falls, will be set up to have one student per seat because when you introduce anyone who is grades for middle school on a bus with elementary, you must default to the Plan B requirement on the bus. And to date, we have approximately, as Dr. Locklear noted in the presentation, the last week, we just opened up all the portals and responses for signing up to ride the bus next year, and we have received just over 2,400 responses right out for bus transportation.
Thank you.
Mr. Barath, you, of course, will be setting up two routing systems for grades 6 through 12. Will you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, and as Dr. Locklear mentioned, we want to be ready for the potential change of grades 6 through 12 going to Plan A. And so while we are collecting all these names and requests for ridership, they will be put into the system under Plan B, which is what will be issued at this time to families beginning December 7. Following, we are developing Plan A routes for all 6 through 12 grades so that when that, we hope comes eventually, we just don't know when, we could bring those kids back every day, then we will be ready for those routes, changes in notifications. So we're building both models.
John, will families need to submit a new bus attestation form for the second semester?
Yes, and those will be distributed to all households of students who are signing up for ridership with their notification.
That's one time only?
Correct.
And then the, as Dr. Locklear indicated, board members and Ms. Thompson, the attestation process at the school, once you get off the bus or once you exit your car, will remain exactly the same whether we're on Plan B or Plan A.
Thank you, and that was a question that some families had for me, and I, and I knew that we would discuss it today. So thanks for clarification.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else?
I wanted to come back to something Ms. Wallen Miller already mentioned, and this is really simply for, to clarify for sure and to make sure parents understand. In grades 6 through 12, we will be returning after Christmas with the option of being either Plan B, which means kids remain in two days' worth of classes, or Plan C, meaning they are virtual. If the governor opts to release the schools to return to Plan A for grades 6 through 12, all students who are currently enrolled in the two-day-a-week program will move to Plan A.
Yes, ma'am.
That is correct.
They would not have the option at that point of going all virtual.
That is correct.
We'll already be underway. So families that are giving this some consideration need to know that the commitment they are making is for the whole semester.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether it's to be in-person or virtual.
Yes, ma'am. That's why we've taken great lengths to make sure that we over-communicate that over and over and over again. If any family has any hesitation about their child being in school for five days a week with all other students in person, with some classrooms having no more social distance than what we would have if all the children were in school, with the exception of those that are in remote learning, you know, we think that our situation will be a little bit better than it would have been if, if we did not have the virtual learning platform. But nevertheless, there will have to be some classrooms where students will be within four or five feet. But if you're uncomfortable with that, then you should sign up for the full remote, Connect Virtual Academy at the beginning of the semester. And if you have any hesitation, because we're not going to reshuffle the deck, we'll obviously pause and get school board approval when that time comes, but we're, we are structuring our spring staffing in such a way where we're making the assumption that we're going to be shifting to Plan A at some point and do so seamlessly. So there, there won't be a stop and go back and rethink and re-staff. We're going to have to work with the staffing, you know, for the most part with what we established at the beginning of the semester. So I appreciate you bringing that question up, Ms. Carter. We, we realize we have to repeat that over and over and over again, even though we have stated it numerous times publicly and published it as well.
Thank you. I want to commend our teachers and of course, Dr. Locklear, Mr. Barath, and all the folks that are helping make the effort to keep our children safe. I was talking with a teacher at our Southern Pines ribbon cutting earlier this week or last week, and she currently has 17 children in her cohort A and 15 in her cohort B. And it, from the feedback she'd gotten from parents, all 32 of them will be planning to return for the full four days of instruction in January. So she was looking forward to getting into a slightly larger classroom on the new Southern Pines campus so that these children could be spread a little farther apart, but she realized right, even right now, that it's not going to be the social distancing that parents have had. So we do appreciate every effort that is taken to keep our children safe and our faculty safe as well. Are there other questions about Plan A and the movement to it? And again, the emphasis is the government allows us, or the governor has allowed us to change grades K through 5, but there can be no change in grades 6 through 12 at this point. All right, then I think we are through with that, but we're still with Mr. Barath.
Yes, Mr. Barath, at this time, if you'd provide us with our monthly update on school construction projects, even though at least one of those, our board members have a lot of very recent experience with. Mr. Barath?
Thank you, and I'm going to share my window here of the presentation. Okay, I trust you all can see the presentation. So Chair Carter, just as you mentioned, good cue feeding into my presentation here with the Southern Pines. This will be the last time you receive an update on Southern Pines, but I cannot help, especially after the great ribbon cutting ceremony we had last week at the school. And so before, you'd always seen an architectural rendering of the school with this somewhat perspective. So now here's the actual school, ready and set up. Again, just coming around the building, everyone had a chance to visit the courtyard between the building wings and how the grade was used to energize that space out there. And the ribbon cutting ceremony, fantastic day of weather. Thankfully, the rain missed us. It did pour just north of us, so I'm very fortunate for all of us standing out there. I don't see a single umbrella in anybody's hand. So the ribbon cutting ceremony, again, great experience with all the teachers and especially the kids that were able to make it there. They just really enjoyed going through the space. They were excited to see everything. So where are we now in this? We're in the process of closeout. This is where, working with Principal Tanya Wagner and her staff, they're identifying any additional furniture needs for the facility and any of the rooms and spaces. And also, she is working on any other equipment or fixtures that need to be purchased to supplement, items to be placed in the school. And the contractor is out there in full force, putting in some items that we're late getting to them to install and working on their punch list items, and then the architect and engineers will be out to verify all the punch list items are completed and the project is deemed finished. Montith Construction is at 90% paid, and you would, if you look at last month's presentation, it said the same thing. That's just because their pay app just came in here today. So they're going to be a little more than 90%, but they won't be at 100% just yet. And remains as always right now that we haven't used the contingency or inflation funds remaining from this project. Going on to Northmore, the other active project that we have, here's the view looking down at the addition. You can see that all the roofing is now complete and in place, and you can see the earthwork and finished dressing it out for seeding of grass is underway. The bio-retention pond has been installed and completed, as well as establishing some growth on the hillside to stabilize the soils. Classroom furniture has been delivered and set into all the rooms out there. You can see a typical classroom setup here. The gymnasium previously, you may recall from previous photo, that one of the backboards had a shikil and mule crush on it and were shattered in pieces, and it finally came. So it'll be in place when we do our ribbon cutting there on the 18th. And the weight room for training of, strength training for all students is in progress out there right now. Science labs, the casework is out in place and all the final hookups are being roughed in. However, as mentioned before, they had a COVID impact with the manufacturing of the epoxy countertops. And so those are late. There's been bi-weekly communication with the supplier of those countertops who was pushing with the factory to try to get in before Thanksgiving, hopefully by the ribbon cutting, but he cannot guarantee that at this time. If it does not make it by the ribbon cutting, it would be later in that week that they would arrive. So right now, again, November 18 at 10 a.m. will be the ribbon cutting ceremony for the facility furniture, as you saw in the photos, is delivered and arranged, and with the exception of the countertops to the science labs. Montith is at 93% paid on this project, and again, has not utilized the contingency and inflation funds at this time. Piner's Elementary, it's still using the architect's representation on this. It won't hopefully be long where we can change that out. Here's what it looks like. We're getting closer to having it look a little more like the representation with the brick going on. Majority of the roofing on the project is not. Majority of the roofing on the project is now dry-in status and they just started fabricating the roofing on-site to put in place in the long-span areas. You can also see in the foreground to the right, how the parent pickup drop, loop, drop-off loop is come, is have their base binder down and stone coming around for the front drop-off location and where the muddy water is the stormwater retention. In the back area in the foreground here is again the playfield, that's where all the geothermal loop well system is placed in here. And here's a view from the parent pickup drop-off loop, looking back at the building, you can see the progress of the brick around the building is going very well, especially around the two-story portion of classrooms, and they're starting to make their way towards the media center cafeteria. This would be the main entry one day when they get curtain wall system gets installed there for the main entry. Inside, typical classroom space, because the roof is dried in and they've already got protection in the windows, they've started getting their drywall set in place and the infrastructure overhead. The admin area is continuing with its metal studs and drywall partitions being erected in there. And up on the second floor, they are getting ready to begin installing drywall as well with the, the progress up there. And again, just looking out across where the playfield would be and off to the far right of this picture, you can see some shiny long sections of metal roofing sitting on top, ready for installation to the far right. The mechanical systems and the loft area that are in place, your outside air units as well as the circulating water source heat pumps for all rooms and all associate piping. This is a view looking back at the main entry where you will see the second floor has an overlook down to the lower. This would be the art room from the view of the hallway in the media center. And this is the gymnasium, they have the ductwork up running through the joists in there and the masonry work is now complete in there, as well as a correction of previously mentioned camber to the roof trusses. They are at right now, again, with modifications due to the asbestos removal of the existing school before demolition and of the substantial completion date has now changed to March 8th. 70%, the timeline is now passed and the contractors at 60% paid, and I like the way those numbers are, where the progress is ahead of the amount paid. Again, the project has not used any contingency or inflation funds remaining from the word of contract. And if you have any questions about any of the projects, that will be the last time you see the project for Southern Pines, so my presentation keeps getting shorter and shorter now.
But it's still pleasant to hear. Dr. Brown, do you have questions?
I just, John, I love the fact that we haven't had to use any contingency funds. What will happen to those funds when the projects are completed?
That's a great question. As you will recall, when we first awarded the projects, especially at Southern Pines Elementary, we had anticipated a cost of site development of approximately $1.3, $1.5 million due to that steep grade across the site. It came in more than that. And so what the board did was it authorized the superintendent staff to identify lottery funding and a portion of capital funding as a set-aside hedge to see where we end up on the projects. If we're able to carry contingency or escalation from project and advance it to the next one, that will reduce the amount of dependence we will have on those funds we have already identified and set aside. So as the projects begin to near completion, as Southern Pines in Aberdeen's getting its final items purchased at the schools and so they're living there, they've identified a few miscellaneous items they need, once that's done, remaining funds will be able to be transferred to the other projects to help reduce that reliance of a lottery fund and a capital funding that's been set aside.
Sounds good. I think of note, and I, I may not be quite correct on this, but it was Mr. Montith who was at the ribbon cutting last week and, and had never told us that he was actually a product of the Moore County Schools and a graduate of Pinecrest?
Oh, that was Brian Thomas. He is the president of the company. John Montith is the CEO. But yes, you're correct, it was Brian Thomas, he's the president of Montith Construction Company, who is a resident, longtime resident, grew up here and went to schools here in Aberdeen and at Pinecrest.
Yep. Mr. Barath, please provide the board with just an approximate amount of, of lottery and local capital that we've been holding back to make sure that we have enough to cover the projected potential costs beyond $103 million for the three projects.
Yes, sir, and I would use an approximation, I do not recall the exact off my head, but it's
Remind everybody just the extent of it. Go ahead.
Approximately $2.2 million in lottery and about $400,000 in capital, combined to about $2.6 million.
So Dr. Brown, we've been holding that back and so the good news, whenever we hear that there's contingency and, and funds left over from Aberdeen that can roll into Southern Pines and then subsequently from Aberdeen and Southern Pines roll into Pinehurst, that will be money that will reduce our dependence on that money that we held in abeyance, that approximately, $2 million, John?
Yes, sir.
$2 million that we've held that has not been available for maintenance and other capital projects since the commissioners directed us to do just that. So we did exactly what we were directed to do at the time that the Southern Pines contract was approved and we've been holding that money back and, and that's, projects that would have been funded with that have been on hold. Those are some of the projects that we're now doing with the $2.1 million the commissioners gave us. And so if we find out later that there's any of that money that we've held back that's available later, that'll be some additional projects we can get done at that time on our deferred maintenance list. Does that help, Dr. Brown?
Okay, Mr. Weaver, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we have any idea how much contingency funds were in each of the projects?
Yes, sir. They are on our budget sheets that I've submitted with each project. I do not have those memorized for the exact amounts of each one, but each project has an identified amount for contingency and escalation.
And all that has been made very clear in the public record for, if you've had any questions, Mr. Weaver, I can assure you that the public record is very full of that information. We'll be, we can get that to you this evening. It's very easy to get, it's all been reported numerous times in public.
I'm aware of that. I just, I just wanted to see how, how much the total contingencies were and, and if we don't use any of it, then that helps offset the lottery money that we held aside.
Yes, just, just as we've laid out.
Just curious.
Yeah, well, I asked John to speak in general terms. The, the specifics are there and, and we have made that presentation numerous times in the past. We've just gotten so busy building the buildings that a lot of that conversation goes back to the year that we approved the bond. And then, and then when we put out the contracts for Southern Pines and Pinehurst.
Are there other questions from Mr. Barath?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say what a pleasure it was to be at the opening on Wednesday and I've, I've driven by the Pinehurst site in the evening and some of the lights were on and it was just, it really just took my breath away to see how far it had come. So it's exciting to see that progress and just to see us be at the, almost at the end of this. I know we have more to do, but this was a wonderful, it was just, it's just been a wonderful testament to the work that we've done.
And I, Madam Chair, I was, I was going to make some of the same comments that last Wednesday was just a proud historical day for Southern Pines and, and what is just, is just so amazing is that each individual school has its own unique character and represents the community extremely well and Southern Pines did so equally as, as did McDeed and Aberdeen. And it's, when you walk in the building, it is, it's just a beautiful, beautiful building. So Dr. Grimace and John, our kudos to you and, and just working with our construction companies and bringing all of that together for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so I think we can move on now to board comments. Dr. Brown, do you have comments?
Just what Ms. Wallen Miller and Ms. Thompson were saying, that Wednesday was certainly in its dark day. And I look forward to November 18th at Northmore High School to have the ribbon cutting for our new auxiliary gym and nine new classrooms. It's been a proud moment to be able to share with families that, people that had graduated from Northmore that had come in to vote, to let them know that they need to come by and see what's happening, that it's very, very rejuvenating to see all that's been happening with our schools, especially in the, the south and in the north. So thank you to all the staff and the workers. It's been, it's, it's going to be a great day for Moore County.
Another great day. Ms. Carter, do you have comments?
I'm just echoing what Betty said, that's all I have. She pretty much took everything I wanted to say, so good job, Betty.
Mr. Dennis, do you have comments? You're muted, Mr. Dennis.
I am now, here we go. Yes, I do have comments. Accountability and results. How do we measure how well we are doing in, in fulfilling our responsibility to ensure all of our students graduate well-prepared for college or career? There's one true measure on how well we have done our job and that is our graduation rate. With graduation, our responsibility for those students ends. Everything we have done, K through 12, should have been done to get us to this point. When you look at the challenges we had four years ago, when our 2020 graduates entered ninth grade, it is obvious we've made good progress, even though we are having the same complaints today from some of our citizens as we did in 2016. We know we have work to do and we're getting it done. This is a process, K through 12. Let's look, look at the results for the class of 2020. Moore County Schools' graduation rate was 93.5%, the highest it has ever been for Moore County Schools. Moore County Schools ranked one in the, number one in the state of the 42 districts graduating over 700 students. Moore County Schools ranked 12th of the 115 public school districts in North Carolina for their graduation rates. Our black graduation rate was 92.8%, an increase of 31.4% since 2010 and is 5.2% above the graduation rate for all of the 2020 graduates in North Carolina. Our Hispanic students' 2020 graduation rate was 90.5%, which was an increase of 49.8% since 2010 and is, and that is 2.9% above the graduation rate for all the graduates in the state of North Carolina. Our white students' 2020 graduation rate was 94.5%, an increase of 11.8% since 2010 and 6.9% above all North Carolina graduates. Over half of last year's total population of juniors and seniors enrolled in at least one college course at San Yels Community College and their pass rate was 92.7%. And for those students choosing a career instead of college, the number of credentials awarded in our Career and Technical Education Program went from 534 in 2015-16 to 3,923 in 1819, a 634% increase. In addition, Moore County Schools' Career and Technical Education Program was the only district in the region and among comparable districts across the state to exceed state goals in all eight performance indicators. Accountability and results, ensuring our students graduate well-prepared for college or career. We know we have challenges, as everyone knows, and we're working hard to improve student performance, but we also know we made excellent progress, even with our present challenges. Let's stop complaining and work together to improve our graduation rate. We have a long way to go and if we work together, we will get there faster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. All good news. And Dr. Metcalf did an incredibly good job laying the capstone achievements out in the pilot article last week as well. Ms. Wallen Miller, do you have comments?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, do you have comments?
No, I don't have any further comments.
Well, thank you. Vice Chair Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we'll wrap it by saying, for those who didn't hear this last week, we are again in virtual format with our work session. We have opted to keep our work sessions virtual to help alleviate some of the demand placed on our IT department. Kent Eklund, Steve Johnson and a very small but very dedicated group of workers are keeping approximately 14,000 people and devices online every day so that learning can continue. We want to say thanks again for all they are doing to facilitate instruction as well as making our meetings and our work sessions happen. We will be calling on this group again to meet with, with us next week, our next meeting will be on Monday. We will be meeting in person at Union Pines High School at 6:30 PM on November 9th. This is a regular business meeting. But again, our IT people will be there ahead of us, setting up and making it happen. So
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, the meeting will actually start at 5?
Well, you're, I'm sorry, we're going to the closed session, so the
That's correct, and then the public session will begin at 6:30.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dennis, would you like to make our motion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I move the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second?
I second, Madam Chair.
All right, you may raise your hand and vote in favor of adjournment. Seeing a 7-0 motion, we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.